Mr. State for October 21, 2020 to Oregon. And Commissioner Andrews will have our input.
Dear the Father, we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for taking care of us. We thank you for this beautiful county in which we live. Lord, we ask you for guidance and wisdom as we come for you tonight. Lord, as we make decisions for the county. We pray protection, Lord, over those who keep us safe. We thank you, Lord, for our staff, Lord, for our county manager, for the other commissioners who step up and take on this role. We pray that you would keep us all in hands and help us, Lord, to do what you're doing. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pray to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin on our agenda tonight, I'm going to ask Randy, there's been some confusion about the meeting that is scheduled on Thursday at the library. So I'm going to ask Randy if he will clarify just what this meeting is.
Madam Chairman, report commissioners, I would call it confusion. I would call it just not knowing.
We just created confusion.
The dates and times are well specified. The meetings are specified. But good citizens need to go to the county's website. And on the very front page is a bunch of information about the update of our Unified Land Development Code that we're attempting to do and have been for many, many months. And we have an official project page that's been set up many, many months ago and it's updated weekly with current information. That has never changed. So citizens really need to go and do their part and go to our website frequently to look at the official project webpage, look at the front page of the website for all of the details. We have had so far, we've had focus groups. We have had community workshops. And these were during work hours and after work hours. They were highly publicized. Now, the next public involvement opportunity is the Big Idea Meeting, which is a culmination of the focus group meetings and the two community workshops that were held and the people who've brought in email questions and concerns. So the Big Idea Meeting is set for Thursday at 6:00 at the library. Again, we have flyers. We have some out here tonight. It's been posted on our website for a while. It's been on the official project webpage for a while. But you have to go to our website to get this information. Also posted to our official project webpage and on top in our front page of the website is not only the meeting, the flyer, but also the PowerPoint presentation that will be delivered to the board. All 31 pages of the PowerPoint presentation are on there. There's emails you can go to to ask the consultants questions and they will get back with you in a very short order. Now, we're the middle of the Unified Land Development Code update. We're back in the middle of it. There's a lot more to go. Namely, there's going to be a lot more public hearings. For example, Thursday's meeting, people don't know about it, but they're arguing, they're complaining that they don't know about it, but they're complaining that they do know about it. So that makes no sense. It is not a public hearing. It's a Q and A between the consultant and the public about the process thus far. So it is not a public hearing. The public hearings will come later in the process. This process should last until at least late December. We think it might eke over into January, maybe February. But the goal is to get a high quality product as the end result, no matter how long it takes. So all the information, the PowerPoint presentation, the virtual meeting rooms with a ton more information is on our official project webpage and on top of the webpage, website of the county in general, HarrisCountyAgo. A lot more public hearings are going to occur once the UDC gets more developed. When the first draft comes out, public hearings. The second draft comes out, more public hearings. And they will be heavily advertised like all the others have. So that's about it. If I can answer more questions, be more than happy to.
Just want to clarify about one thing. All the roundtables, those were held with wood.
The focus groups.
The black, oh, sorry. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Those were held with wood, not with this box.
Correct. That was select citizens from all walks of life in the county to meet with Wood, the consultant, to get a deep understanding of the needs and issues of the county. Then came the community workshops where the community came in for two days at the community center, two different days in the afternoon and at night for citizens to come in and deal directly with the consultant Wood and ask questions. There's been a lot of email traffic between citizens and Wood as a consultant to answer a lot of questions via email. And those were responded to always the next day. Again, the Big Idea Meeting on Thursday is a joint meeting between the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Commission, and the consultant to deliver a lot of information. But after that meeting ends, there's going to be plenty of time after that meeting for Wood, the consultant, to interact with the citizens and any other group that wants to attend to answer any questions that they may pose. We want this to be a transparent process, major public participation, because the end results, in December or January, the end result will impact every citizen in this county.
Okay, have you got any other questions? I just have a lot of comments that blow it up off my head. Questions about the zoning.
About the zoning. At least they know about it. They're called.
Okay, first on our agenda, the approval of the minutes of the Red Bull Session about October 6th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Harry's second.
Okay, Harry, again, I'm sorry. Harry, you're way down there. I can't hear you. Okay. All right, so there's a motion, a second. Is there a discussion, a discussion of changes, correction? Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Harry. All right, motion is approved. Nancy, is there any opinions, citizens? Right, the next item on our agenda under old business is the renegotiation of Rebel Aviation Corporate Airport hangar lease. Mr. Jerry Breeding. The airport's corporate hangar has been vacant in some time. And Rebel Aviation Services LLC of Sharpburg, Georgia submitted a proposal to lease the corporate hangar to house various aircraft and provide aircraft related services from the hangar, such as aircraft sales, service and management, flight instruction, rentals, maintenance and inspection, avionics, and future charter service. A lease agreement was prepared and reviewed by Rebel Aviation Services, the airport manager, the county manager, the county attorney, and the airport consultant, Lee Edge. The board approved the lease agreement during the September 1st, 2020 commission meeting. The lease was to start on September 15th, 2020 and termination on June 30th, 2022 with automatic renewals. And the rental rate was $1,900 monthly, which is the established trade as of January 1st, 2018. Upon further review of the lease, Rebel Aviation LLC has indicated that they cannot make the lease work without Section 7, assignment and sublease being revised from 10% to 0%. And Mr. Breeding is here to answer any questions that we might have. And we will need a motion and a vote to revise, Lord, the lease. And if approved, it can begin November 1st, 2020 and terminate on June 30th, 2020. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we would change the Section 7 from the 10% to 0%. I think that would benefit all parties involved at this point.
Okay, there's the motion to approve the change.
I'll second that.
Okay, and there's a second. Any discussion or any questions with Mr. Breeding?
I've got a question, Madam Jerry. I guess this is for Mr. Brett. I know that we are responsible for normal maintenance and maintenance, for normal wear and tear. Is there something that will protect us if he does sublease? Is there some requirement that he have some kind of agreement with his sublease or regarding payment for damages?
Well, I would have to go back and look at it. But to the extent that there are terms in the lease requiring responsibility by the leasing for any damage made, then regardless of whether he subleases or not, he would be on hold for that. Yeah, so it looks like under paragraph 20, there's the damage to hangar provision. And so the leasing shall be liable for any damages. And so if he did, if he were a sublease and the subletcy damaged it, he could certainly try to go after them. But at the end of the day, he's the one responsible to us.
Mr. Breeding, what is your opinion?
Thank you for considering me again. But yes, that's the, just trying to start off on a successful note, but I do appreciate the county considering it. And really, it's very difficult to manage as far as cost per each month. It can be very variable each month. And also, to me, it's seemed very vague as far as interpretation on what would be considered a sublease. That's some concern to have in the future. And then also, I guess, thirdly, it just, it's kind of disincentive for me to bring new clients or customers to the airport as far as a cost standpoint. That's all I have. And it's, other than that, it's a leasing toddle, in my opinion.
How's it go?
Well, everything pretty much in place now as far as all my, you know, still a long way to go as far as setup tools, supplies, and that kind of thing. Otherwise, insurance requirements and that, mostly paperwork stuff is pretty well in place.
When do you anticipate being able to be up and running?
I hope as soon as possible. Yeah, definitely within the first of the month.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Breeding? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
There is a motion and a second on the floor to approve the change in the contract, the rise from 10% to 0% on the assignment and sublease. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion is approved. The next item on our agenda is our new business, financial statements. June 2020 for Airline 1920 and July 11th, 2020 for Airline 2021. Can we please read financial statements?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to say that I appreciate the department heads and staff that are doing a great job on the budget. We look at through the cozy, we first started all with the crazy. It looks really good, G30. I think we're going to marry that. I thought it was a great shame.
Great, thank y'all.
How are we looking now? Do you know? You got any concerns going forward? I mean, this all looks good and we know what was going on there. But, you know, what do you think is going to happen going forward? Or how are we looking lately?
As far as numbers wise, they're fine. You know, we got, when things got pushed back three months with COVID, our deadlines were extended as far as the audits did launch 31st now, along with the reports that go along, speaking of 1-1 reports, hotel, hotel. I'm still working with the auditors and with staff to try to get it done by our normal time. Whether that happens or not, you know, we pushed back a little bit. But also, the phase two of COVID is a carrier of money in no way. The state said we're not going to get that. But I don't see that as being a big issue, to be honest with you. We may have to make some budget amendments to specific departments that may have spent more towards COVID supplies and COVID needs than others that may not have budgeted for those. But we have the reserves from the 1.6 that we got in phase one to be able to do that. But I don't see that being a big problem across the board. That'll be very specific maybe to one or two departments. But other than that, if everything looks good, all the revenues are where they should be or higher. We didn't see the decrease in supplies through laws. We actually are seeing increases pretty much across the board. If everything's looking on track, I don't foresee anything right now.
Sounds good.
Well, I know we're starting to go back doing the jury trials and stuff like that. Do you think that that may be something that may affect us to start doing more, you know, instead of being in person more stuff? You know, I don't know. I'm just asking, because I know we started grand jury today. They're having selection and stuff.
I've had a conversation with the clerk and she has a list that came from the judges and from Superior Court of Idol that she's going to have to give. So that's one of the items that I've said may, a specific item that we may have to do a budget amendment because that was something that wasn't taken into account.
We had our second meeting yesterday. The judge got, there's still, there's still some things.
There are some requirements.
And jury trials will start in January, probably the end of January, mid to end January.
Okay.
But we'll have another meeting probably scheduled next week or following week. Okay, so there's a motion, a second to approve the financial statements for June, July, and August. So all of those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Harry. How's that, John?
Madam Chairman, Board of Commissioners, item number four, authorization to submit a land and water conservation fund grant application to the state to continue the Man-O-War Railroad Recreation Trail.
You said it right that time.
That's right.
It's been studied.
It uses a lot of ink. So the county has, the county has continued to work on this trail for many years. Phase one, two, and three are complete and are being used heavily, in my opinion. And we want to continue that development and continuation of that trail further on. But we need additional funds. The annual Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, which is federal money given to the state and given to the local communities for outdoor recreation, has opened up, the cycle has opened up, and county staff has worked on a $1.5 million grant application to continue the trail's development. And the deadline of the grant is October 30th of 2020. This grant is a 50-50 match, 50% state, 50% county, 50% being minimum county. And the minimum grant amount is half a million dollars. So the county's grant application is to continue the trail an additional 3.25 miles from where it currently ends behind the Mountain Creek Inn to 1.7 miles south of the Calaway Country Store or 1.6 miles north of Pleasant Grove Road or about 2.75 miles from downtown Hamilton. This trail, if this grant is successful, this trail is almost intercity. And that is one of the goals, is to have a trail intercity. In addition, this project not only will continue the trail, but will also rehabilitate the historic Rebel Bridge over years 27 near the Calaway Country, near the main entrance of the Calaway Gardens Resort. And we'll provide a trailhead at the Calaway Country Store with an ABA compliant connection from the trail to the parking lot at the Calaway Country Store. So the grant amount would be half a million, which is the max, or 33.3% from the state and a million, 66.6% from the county for a total project cost of 1.5 million. The million dollars from the county is already budgeted in this year's budget to continue the trail. So by combining this with a grant, we can go much farther. The grant will be awarded in early 2021. And they'll be available to spend in the mid to fall, mid to late fall 2021. So if approved, the grant funds in the county max can be properly budgeted for in next year's budget. If the grant application is not successful, and these are very highly competitive grants, highly competitive. If it's not successful, the 1.2 million dollar project as in the approved budget will continue, but it will stop at the Calaway Country Store and not continue on. So a motion, a vote needed to authorize the online grant application submitted to the state and authorize the chairman, county manager, and county clerk to sign all necessary related documents. And you can see on the agenda package, you can see where phase one started and end, phase two started and end, phase three, where it began and where it ends, and phase four, which is this phase, to continue on 3.2 miles, 3.25 miles.
So if we get the one we approved the year before last month and we get this one, will we be farther than this?
Can we get to Hamilton?
No, because the first one, the one that was printed down in Palm Beachville, was for Elzy Park. It's Elzy Park.
But if we can get this grant and then what we've already budgeted, we'll be real close to getting to Hamilton.
Within 2.7 miles.
Yeah, so then we're, yeah, we're not too much further than we've really got a destination from one city to another city and can really make this thing something special.
Exactly, intercity travel. I think that's pretty cool.
Well, real cyclists will come for that big distance.
That's right. Well, I make the voting. I make the voting that we authorize the online grant applications submitted to the state and authorize the chairman and county manager and county clerk to sign all those here.
Harry, second, any other discussion?
When do you think, if this doesn't happen, are we still going to go ahead and try to proceed with what we've already budgeted so that we're not pushing this thing off?
Right.
I don't want to wait. I'd rather go ahead and let's try to get things moving for at least that part's already budgeted.
Correct, we're already in the worst. And it's a nice dovetail, meaning we might wait maybe 10 or 20 days for the grant to be awarded, not awarded in early 2021, maybe in February. If we don't get it, we're in a really good position to keep going and finish the project to at least the Calaway Country Store and have that connection. If we don't get the grant, we should be riding on that new trail probably this time next year. If we do get the grant and go further, it might be about six months further time. But it's worth the wait to get it, but we're not stopping. It's a nice dovetail.
Any other discussion? All of those in favor?
The next one is item number five, project updates. To quickly go over these updates. Number four, replacement telephone system that is ongoing. It has been installed in various locations so far. So that's an ongoing project to be completed by late November. Number six, new equipment for this room to allow live streaming and recording of meetings. The equipment is slowly getting here. Hopefully, that can be completed by late this month and at least, at least by early next month. Number 12, replacement kitchen equipment for the prison. That should be completed by late November. Air lease has been awarded. And number 14, the four replacement consoles and new server at the 9017. We personnel state contracts and that should be delivered in mid, in early January. Number 15, disposal of the old 10,000 gallon underground fuel storage tank. That has been completed. All the paperwork submitted to EPD. We're waiting for EPD to approve all the submitted information. Number 21, road dropping county roads using SLS 14 funds. A road list is being prepared by public works director, my ground. So that should be on my office probably late this week or early next week. Once I get that list for road dropping, I'll give it to the board to see if I want to add any additional roads while we're doing our annual road dropping. So we want to get all the roads we can in there. For the 100,000, we have budgeted. The road list is coming from my ground and his needs and his concerns. But I want to make sure the board looks at the list to make sure the board's concerns are in there as well. Number 22 and 23, the five county bridges that need repair. Those repairs are ongoing. They just got started. So that's an ongoing project to be completed by June 30th of next year. Number 24, a perennial favorite, the Melanie Lakes Dam is on bid. The bid deadline is Thursday. And so we'll know that number. And that would be bought before the board's consideration on November 3rd and completion during mid-2021. Number 29 is happening right now. We're applying for Land and Water Conservation Fund before the deadline. Number 31, a lighting system for the soccer complex. Bedspecs are being prepared right now and they should go out next week. Number 33, a new side of the airport has been installed.
And it looks good.
I think it looks good. We had to get it off the state right away and off the county's right away. So it's kind of a hide a little bit, but we're right on the right ways. So DOT won't get mad at us.
I'm glad we finally have one.
And also, the same signs are at, with different wording, of course, is that solid waste and animal control. Number 36, tightly grown water lines. That project is proceeding aggressively. Number 42, old library renovations, the MOU for Mercer Medical. Again, all parties have approved that agreement and donations are coming in. So we're waiting for funds to be collected to begin phase one, which is the design phase. Number 45, the update of the land development codes. The big, the joint Big Idea Meeting is October 22nd at 6:00 PM at the library. And number 48, as Clint Chastain just mentioned, the 1.6 million dollars cares ad grant has been collected, first phase, has been collected and is in the county coffers and has been for some time. However, the governor did not award phase two to the counties. He awarded phase two, but not to the counties or cities. So it appears we're not going to get any additional funds from the state. You can see this lost and lost and the teach lost a cap so far. They have not changed since last meeting. And the single family home building permits remain at 15. But I did send the board an email, which I learned recently from the city of West Point. The city of West Point has a, the part of the city of West Point, as everybody knows, a small part of it is located in Harris County. And they have some vision up there that the second phase didn't take off yet. There's 44 lots that are available. But 22 single family home building permits applications have been submitted to city of West Point to start building in phase two, which we won't, the county won't get any building permit revenue from it. They will get ad more tax and those kind of taxes when it's finished in about 12 to 18 months. So I thought that was good news. So I thought that was good news, so the county should receive about 22 additional building permits in the county in the next eighteen months. From the ci, from the city of West Point, less than Harris County. They have, they have to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions remaining? Mr. Breeding?
On number six, where we're talking purchasing the new equipment, and that's coming in?
Yes.
Now, we're not fixing to tell our friendly neighborhood chairman over here that, that he's fired over.
No.
Good. You keep coming as long as you want to come.
As long as you want. It's a free service over there.
That's right. And that's been for you.
Are you?
But I would like on number thirty-four, where we got the first of the two garbage trucks, are we still having trouble finding drivers to field the trucks?
Yes. Right now, today, we're down two full-time garbage truck drivers that require CDO licenses. The 15 dollars and eight cents, which is a higher amount, it was like thirteen seventy-something old amount. Now, because the pay plan was implemented, that thirteen and changed to fifteen and changed, and we're still having hard time finding garbage truck drivers. Right now, we're down two full-time, and we've been down for about several months. So that means the existing people have to work with them longer or a little harder.
But I have received double points, so they're doing a job. You add in the additional.
I have to admit, Ronnie Duke and his gang, they're doing a phenomenal job.
They do.
But, but, you know, they have plenty of resources, you know, people, they're hard to find, but they're out there. Equipment, new equipment, new trash coming in, three convenience sites. He, he does a phenomenal job in, to pick up all the garbage and trash in the county, and he knows holidays coming, and when holidays are here, the trash fight goes up exponentially. And he sees that, you know, we all see from the, from the graph an uptick in garbage collection rates, amounts, tonnage collected, using the same amount of drivers, the same amount of vehicles, and more tonnage that's continuously come in.